Every school.
The hours, clock having arrived, I'll call this meeting to end.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Third item is down to form. Julie, do you have form? The fourth item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Is there any change in sequence or removal of items, Mr. Knox?
Yes, removal of E4 under guide consent of agenda items.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda with the change indicated.
I'll move.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as changed. On favor, I oppose. Motion carried. Our next item, number five, is reorganization of the board. And I thank Deb Seddon for giving us this little cheat sheet. So nominations are now in order for the office of president. Are there any nominations? Members will nominate. There is no second needed. And the chair has to ask the person nominated, well, first of all, are there any other nominations? Okay, then according to the cheat sheet, the chair has to ask the person nominated if they accept the nomination. And yes, I accept the nomination. And next I have to say Marion Lippert is nominated for the office of president. Are there any further nominations? I have to ask that three times. I'm not losing it. Are there any further nominations? Are there any further nominations? Nominations are closed. I call for a motion to appoint Marion Lippert as chair.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to appoint Marion Lippert as chair. All in favor? I oppose. Motion carried. Let the record stand that I abstained. Okay, next, nominations are now in order for the office of vice president. Are there any nominations?
I'll nominate Nate.
Nate, do you accept the nomination?
I do.
Nate Bowden is nominated for the office of vice president. Are there any further nominations? Are there any further nominations? Are there any further nominations? With that, nominations are closed. I will entertain a motion to appoint Nate Bowden as vice president.
A motion to appoint Nate Bowden as vice president?
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to appoint Nate Bowden as vice president. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Nominations are now in order for the office of clerk. Are there any nominations?
I am willing to do it, but if someone else who happens to just not be like someone a little more homebound, not as much out and about, it just, it takes signatures at times that I've been able to manage and I'm more than happy to continue. But if someone else is interested, it wouldn't hurt my feelings.
Homebound.
More homebound.
More homebound.
I motion to appoint Julie Strun.
That was quick.
And I'm homebound.
I second. Okay. Julie, do you accept the nomination?
I do. Julie Strun is nominated for some of an opportunity and I blew it.
You have to talk, you can't be meeting before the meeting.
So Julie Strun is nominated for the office of clerk. Are there any further nominations? Are there any further nominations? Are there any further nominations? Nominations are closed. I call for a motion to appoint Julie Strun as school district clerk.
I'll make a motion to appoint Julie Strun as clerk.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to appoint Julie as clerk. All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Nominations are now open for the office of treasurer. Are there any nominations?
I nominate Chris.
Chris, do you accept the nomination?
Yes.
Chris Swisland is nominated for the office of treasurer. Are there any further nominations? Are there any further nominations? Are there any further nominations? Nominations are now closed. I will entertain a motion to appoint Chris Swisland as the school district treasurer.
My motion to appoint Chris Swisland as school district treasurer?
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to appoint Chris Swisland as treasurer. All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, the next item, reorganization, is to appoint the WESB representative. The big thing with that is check the website every now and then and then be the voting delegate at the conference. And we don't have to do an election, we just have to appoint. Is there someone who wants it? I know, you're just dying, Rick.
I'm good.
Fantastic. I appoint Rick. We will appoint Rick then, mostly because he didn't accept my homebound. Sounds good. Rick is appointed as the WESB representative. Oh, I guess we do need a motion. I'll make a motion to approve him. I'll second it. It's been moved and seconded to appoint Rick as the WESB representative. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item F, appoint a CISA 5 representative. That is currently held by Rick Winters. And I think he just assumed those responsibilities quite recently.
And the meeting's Thursday. If anyone wants to replace me.
I'll appoint Rick Winters as the CISA 5 representative.
Is there a second?
I hope you wish you took court.
I knew you'd go up in court each night Thursday.
Is there a second? Or is this going to die at the lack of a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Chris. It's been moved and seconded to appoint Rick Winters as our CISA 5 representative. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item G, the designation of depository. I would, bless you, I would entertain a motion to approve Associated Bank as the district's official depository for the coming year.
I'm going to motion to approve Associated Bank as the district's official depository for the year.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Associated Bank as the district's official depository. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Last item here, H, establish days and times of school board meetings.
I'll make a motion to set the days and times of the regular school board meetings as the second Monday of the month at 6:00 PM with the exception of changing the meeting date and time when deemed necessary.
Thank you.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to set the days and times of the school board meeting on the second Monday of the month at 6:00 PM with exceptions as necessary. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, everyone. Let's move on to item number... Thought I was gonna sneeze there. Number six announcements. We have the student representative update.
All right, so our student representatives are not currently at the track meet and the other one is at a softball game. So this is the PowerPoint that they put together. Elks Youth Achievement Award was last week Wednesday, and 12 of our PHS seniors were recognized for excelling in different areas. If you want to flip to the next slide, there's our recipients for each category. So I believe 14 different schools were there and pretty neat little ceremony. So the auditorium was filled at Northwood High School. So great to see that. The senior trip is Wednesday.
Oh, sorry, any questions? I see in the PowerPoint it says that we also had a student take fifth place in the statewide Elks Constitution.
Yes, Owen Roberts took fifth, and he was awarded $2,400 for his first scholarship. Yeah, they gave away, I believe it was just under $30,000 in scholarships that he won. So yeah, pretty cool experience.
Thank you.
You bet. Senior trip is Wednesday. They're going to Minnesota and play some softball, and then all of America, as well as graduation is coming even soon. We're about two weeks away. Next Saturday, May 24th, at 10:00. Is that their order? Earth Day was a hit. We helped many places around here in need. We also spent some of our late morning at the cemetery cleaning that up. I don't know how many bags we did, but Pete Peterson was definitely busy. And picking those bags up for us was a great opportunity to help our community out. And then in the afternoon, our students went to kayaking and hiking. Not the best day to do that, but we tried our best to actually go kayaking. We did not go hiking, and we were setting up for prom that day. So it kind of worked well with the weather and the misty and the rain, so it worked out. Prom was a couple weeks ago, two, seven days ago now. So the PHS students had a lot of fun. Their favorite dress-up day, the teachers kind of did like a little sneak dress-up day, so we dressed like students. And so that's the top picture. And then there's the four buggers down below. Our king and queen was, our king was Dawson Luther and our queen was Kelly Montague. Baseball and softball. Baseball is continuing with their strongest season. They played for the conference championship on Friday. If everything shakes out how it's supposed to, they'll share the conference with Pacelli. They unfortunately lost 3-1, which was a good game. They're 5-1 in conference now, 9-5 overall. They have tough competition coming up. And throughout their schedule this year, they're away tonight at Tri County. And along with the varsity team, the JV team is undefeated, so moves to them. Our softball team is 4-11 overall, 3-6, I believe that shouldn't say in conference. And maybe Rockville on Thursday last week, and they're at Tri County again, or with baseball team tonight. And then the Lucy Memorial Game will be held on May 15th here at Pittsville, and they will play forever. Our track hosted both high school and middle school track meets last week. You can kind of read here in the different places that students took. It was nice and hot, but students had a good time, lots of help. You know, just at the Boys and Girls Varsity Track Meet, you know, our middle school helped there, which was great to see. And then at our middle school meet, our varsity athletes or track athletes came and helped there. So a lot of moving parts, a lot of people helping, which is also, you know, for us to host a track meet, it takes a lot. Different events going on at different times, so it's great to see the help from our community.
Any questions?
Boy, that's student comments.
I have two comments. Pete Peterson ran into me at lunch on Friday and indicated this was the hardest working group that he's worked with, whatever the cemetery and others he was very complimentary. And the second thing is if you want to know what dressed like a student day is, wear socks with Birkenstocks, holy jeans. I'm just telling you, those are the things, and high waters. Go figure, right? Tight old pants coming back in soon. I think you're a whole don't hate. Thank you, Taylor.
I believe on the next agenda item as well.
Did you participate in anything?
Yes.
Okay, item number seven is celebrations of recognition of students entering military.
So we have four students. Anthony Cullen, who's going to the Army Reserves. He has not had a date yet as of this morning. Saturday, I asked him, so he's waiting for a couple things to get happen. I feel he hasn't been in the Army Reserves. Katherine Klamrosky will be entering the Army. She leaves fall, most likely stationed in Fort Jackson, South Carolina. Cody Lockesir will be entering the Marines. He will be out in San Diego for basic training in August and then in Missouri. And Grayson Schoolley will be entering the Air Force. He leaves in the fall and he's unsure of the rotation yet.
You're gonna get a brief celebration.
Certainly.
I would like to formally put Jen on the spot here today. Jen is here today. Jen's Swisland, who is going to be taking over for Deb July 1st. Welcome, Jen. We'll have a shindig for Deb next month at the board meeting, isn't it? But welcome, Jen.
Okay, item number eight, public comments for school board policy 187. Are there any public comments?
No.
Okay, no public comments. So we're going to go on to item number nine, which is the consent agenda items. A, new notice certification. B, regular meeting minutes and closed session minutes from April 14th. Special meeting minutes from April 16th. The various financial reports is item D. Under E, we have hirings. Library and media specialist Rebecca Sturry, high school special education teacher, Alison Bickford, and head varsity boys basketball coach, Stephen Hittman. I have had a suggestion to pull item D, which is the financial status, from the consent agenda item, from the consent agenda for a separate motion. And also, I guess that's it? No, he's not. We pulled that off the agenda. So I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items A, B, C, D, 1 through 3.
I'll second.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda items A, B, C, E, 1 through 3. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda item D.
I'll second.
With Chris abstaining. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to approve consent agenda item D. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Chris abstaining. Okay, item number 10, information only items. First of all, the district administrator needs update.
So I would like to, Deb, can you stop on the strategic plan slide? I'd like to briefly talk about next month, foreshadowing next month when it's going to be my update, Deb. We're going to be giving our kind of yearly summary and update of our goals. My district administrator update will be related to the strategic plan, so I will be giving an update regarding our progress in each of these areas on the strategic plan as part of my update next month. Okay, next slide. So Taylor talks about graduation. We have, things are going rather quickly here. Next week, Wednesday, we have the backglow. It will be at 5:30 at St. John's Lutheran Church and then senior awards following that in the auditorium. And then graduation will be Saturday, May 24th at 10:00. As I had emailed the board, we are extending a formal limitation to any board members. We'd love to have you attend and sit up on stage to honor our graduates at the graduation ceremony. So hiring updates. Thankfully, this list is getting smaller. We're whittling it down slowly, but surely. So as of right now, we have two positions that are unfilled. Our special education hair professional position, which has been posted for Danielle Buck, going on four months now.
I just received a phone call last week, Friday.
Okay.
So, somebody?
Okay.
Stacy?
Excellent. And then our high school math position. So, and we do have some contingency plans in place that will obviously remain posted, but Taylor and her team have been exploring various options, how we will cover that, including internal coverage, overloads with existing staff members that actually had approached Taylor about potentially doing that to fill in, so.
And I will just say that I've heard very positive things from current scale, that they would love to be able to do that.
Yep.
That's, I mean, I think that's awesome. It speaks very highly to our employees that they're willing to do that. And I don't know that that's a bad thing with all of what's happening and just movement of different things and how much money we can save by, especially when people actually really want it. I don't feel like they're being forced at all. They were actually really excited about the opportunity, so that's just awesome. Takes a strong team to feel that way, so that's.
They actually approached the district about potentially doing that, which certainly you can ask people to do it. That takes a lot out of your teaching workload in the course of a year.
And it could buy a year for us to look at all kinds of options, because I know this year, you know, we had a couple of classes that were very, very, very small, that were like, like one and three student, and like very small. And so it could give us just some opportunities of, do we have ways to offer those? Because I absolutely want students to be able to have it, but is there a way to move some stuff around just a little bit? So it could buy us a little bit of time, just to kind of figure all of that out too, especially when people are so open. So just super appreciative that we got such a strong team. And that comes with strong leadership, something.
Okay. Oh, did we email?
I don't know.
You should have a copy, board member, something you can type in email to you. So our year-end updates, I referenced that as far as mine. So the directors will all be giving their year-end summary updates at the June board meeting. The principals will both give an update on their building goals, and then I will be summarizing our progress and each of the pillars from our strategic plan that will be at the June board meeting next month. So the next one, the, you know, I briefly mentioned this at the board retreat about, you know, we've talked about this as a board, it's one of our pillars in our plan is connecting, building connections and strengthening connections. I put an example of like a certificate of appreciation from another school district that I saw. I was in a establishment eating lunch and they had this behind, sitting on the bar. I was eating food. And I was sitting behind the bar and I saw them, I thought, that's really neat. It was more or less something that they had given out to businesses that supported the school district, a simple gesture. It's kind of like a token of our appreciation for some of those supports. And then moving to the next slide with something a little more organized would be WERSA, which is the World Schools Alliance. Deb, can you click on the next slide? Could you click on that top link, please? So what you'll see on the WERSA website is there's actually over on the right there, those are all honorees that the WERSA acknowledges each year. So they do a whole range of nominations. Those are due, I believe, at the end of July. I think you saw the date, 27th of July, maybe. So what I was hoping the board would want to entertain is potentially talking about, specifically the one that jumped out was the community partner. And if the board wanted to potentially nominate a business or someone in the community that has been an exceptional community partner, so. And it does need to be, we can have the discussion, I don't need to have a name tonight, because we have till the end of July to nominate a business or a person. But it was something I wanted to open up for discussion here tonight for the board and talk about, because we obviously have a lot of partners here that help us do the great things that we do. Or any of those other areas. If you want to step back one step, again, real quick, just to look at some of those other nominations that you can make. You have school board member of the year, administrator of the year, principal of the year, teacher of the year, support staff member of the year, community partner of the year, school advocacy of the year, and CISA employee of the year. I would probably suggest that like our administrative team, like if we were going to be a teacher or support staff, that nomination would like to come from another teacher. So what my plan was, was to share this with the administrators, to share with staff, in case any staff wanted to nominate their colleagues or an administrator or however that may be. The one I felt like would be appropriate for the board to discuss would be the community partner, the school advocacy. Those would be ones that would be a board level topic of. Not to say that other people could not nominate.
Right.
But that tends to be, I think, in the board's purview.
Yeah, I think it's a wonderful idea to look into this. I think we have some bad business partners and we should be excited about everyone seeing that.
So is our June board meeting early enough or do we need to?
Our July board meeting would be early enough. We would have till the end of July, so if we put it on.
So we could put it on June for maybe board members to bring any suggested nominations?
Correct.
And maybe a little bit about why?
Yep.
And then we could all think about it and then?
Come up with one.
Come up with one that we put together for July.
The one thing I did not get an answer to was if we could nominate more than one entity. I sent her like a help ticket to ask if we could nominate. So if the board chose two, could you do two nominations? And I'm waiting for a response. I think that's a great idea, if we were to bring back potential.
Yeah, and the other opportunity is with WASB as a business on the roll.
Correct.
That you can nominate.
Yep, thank you for mentioning that.
Yeah, and usually in our magazine, four usually get like profiles every year, but they can all get special recognition. So that's another, another way for us to kind of give kudos.
That would be to nominate five, maybe?
I think so, something like that. I know you can nominate more than one for WASB. Yeah.
And you know, the plaques would be something a little more informal that we could do as a district. And then you have these, you know, state level and national level recognitions, I think, are important for supporters.
If we implemented our own district level plaques, well, then it would be which of the plaques do we actually want to share the story for the bigger board, right? In a sense, we would be setting up our list of people to consider, because we've recognized all of them.
So just to put a thing about prior, and we'll put it as an item on for June, if board members could come back and administrators, if you could send, I'll share that link where it's on here. If you could send it out to staff, if they want to nominate anyone.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. The next item under information only is item B, board goals. Again, our first goal related to the referendum we covered. Our second goal was the education foundation or additional funding. Um, our second goal was the education foundation or additional funding streams. Let me, that's the correct term for that. Um, and there is another meeting scheduled for that group. Um, Wednesday, May 28th will be the next meeting. Uh, Deb, is it at five? Um, you have to choose if you want five or six.
Oh.
Cause that was, everybody said yes to both times?
To both, okay.
So whichever one works best. Item six, guys.
If everybody said yes, may I make a humble suggestion to five? That would be at five so that folks can go home and enjoy the weather?
The 28th?
28th.
Yep. Uh, five sounds good to me. I'm just thinking Nate, can you make it at five?
Yes, if you'd ever check yes. Perfect. Anybody here have an eighth grader?
Okay.
I don't need to.
Do you have to do a cameo though as the district administrator?
No, it's why I became a district administrator.
I got it. I think, yeah, I think you got it on, you got it.
I think we'll be okay at five because if anybody wants to race up for the dance, I'm still thinking.
Okay, sounds good. Um, the third goal we had, uh, was related to improving communication with our community. And, um, I think we made some headway on that. We talked about that some at our retreat and also I think taking a step forward with the, um, business honor roll and business of the year nominations, I think, are, um, are positive. Any other thoughts about that communication board goal?
I will, I, I know it's only one avenue, but you know, I shared that quarterly update with you guys with our social media for schools and on there you can see that Pittsville traditionally has been top 10% as far as traffic regardless of size with, uh, the number of likes and shares we get. We do get a lot of mileage out of our social media posts, um, and I love how she gives a, she'll give us a, we know what the most popular post was, the most liked and most shared posts, so.
I think the discussion around kind of, um, finding an easier way to reach out to all of our alumni is a great way of meeting part of the school too, that's getting, that's our community. People that have graduated from here, that's a way of getting information out. So seeking that information is another way we've been going about meeting that goal.
And I did start that process, Dana reached out to some of those key stakeholders that were mentioned as people that would be able to be a resource for trying to get a hold of alumni, so.
I think the Pittsville record is doing a good job of it.
And the Pittsville record prints what is sent to them. So I think that our building principals are doing a really good job of encouraging your staff to send things to the Pittsville record. We can only work with what we have.
We'll have to get two classes next year and then write from Pittsville record, so we'll start.
Okay.
And then the middle school, we're gonna have fun, Jones.
Sounds good. Good thing we're going to 12 pages, maybe?
A lot of news from Pittsville.
There, yes, there, yes. Amazing. Um, anything else on that third goal related to communication and recognition for the community? Um, if not, the fourth goal is, um, uh, related to the childcare center. And I know that there is a, um, the subcommittee met on this. And, um, and we do have that as a agenda item coming up. But subcommittee members, do you want to say anything about your deliberations and your meeting?
I feel we can cover it with the talk.
Okay.
With the intro chat.
Okay, sounds good. Anything else on board goals? Well, it's almost the end of the school year, so, um, we'll have to start looking on the goals for next year. So, thank you. Item number 11, discussion action items. Item A is, I hope I'm saying this right, the LODE system? Okay.
So while Taylor's walking up, I'll give you a brief background is that this discussion actually started about, Marissa, can I correct, about two, two years ago? Two and a half? Um, involved parents, students, staff and administration discussing the LODE system as a way to, uh, recognize excellence, academic excellence. So this has been going on, this discussion for several years, so I'll turn it over to Taylor and her team if you can give you an overview.
So, um, this is an action item for you guys tonight. So the LODE system allows students to focus on their own accomplishments. Um, and it looks at their GPA, obviously they have a 3.0 for the GPA or above, and then based on their rigor, um, of coursework that they take, which leads to our building goal, which will appear next month. Uh, so when you think about rigor, you think of dual credit, BP, Star Peloton, ECCP classes, um, as well as some of our other higher courses like advanced chemistry, for example. So it looks at those courses, but it really focuses on that individual and the career path they're taking, um, whether that's four-year college, tech school, um, but it really focuses on that, that, that student while they're in high school to challenge themselves, um, throughout their time versus challenging between risking their GPA because they're taking rigorous courses. So an example would be like, I'm gonna take a X course that might be an easier grade to get versus challenging myself, which will benefit me for my life after high school. So whether that's a four-year AP class, um, so that's kind of the overview of it. We're gonna give you some data points in just a little bit, but kind of we're gonna go back to say like what, what we do currently and then what we would like to see happen, um, with our fresh, incoming freshman class, so.
So right now, the way we recognize students at graduation and the way that they are recognized, um, you know, when they're applying for scholarships and things are based on, a lot of those questions are asking if you're in the top 10%. And then at graduation, this picture right here are the cords that they get to walk with. And at graduation right now, they just, they get those cords in the morning. There's no like acknowledgement during the ceremony of those things. So right now, and I, I don't know when this actually started, like cords are given from 3.0 and higher. So you know, you see the ranges here for purple, bronze, silver, and then top 10% is an additional gold cord. So if you're top 10%, you're probably getting a silver and a gold. And then our valedictorian and soliditorian get whatever GPA they are having, probably these two, and then a met, which is actually made by the tech department, which is awesome. Um, so that's the way that we visually can see at graduation who our top students are. And that's been that way for, at least this part has been that way for a very long time. Um, what the LODE system would do in that recognition piece at the end of the year would be you could come to graduation and you could then see the students who would have these LODE levels that they have accumulated points by taking rigorous courses. So what I'm missing in this, what we're missing in this chart is I didn't put numbers because there would be a similar range but of honor points from a LODE score that would help them determine if they've made cumulade, magna cumulade, or summa cumulade. And those are Latin terms for what's in parentheses there. So how schools use these levels of honor allow students to take courses from freshman year on to earn points that put them in one of these two categories if they at least have a 3.0 GPA, which is pretty similar to what we do now. But what it does is right here, we have our top two students who are honored by GPA alone compared to their classmates, where this system wouldn't specifically look at, sorry, so, just these two, it would look at the top students in the class based on their overall rigor instead of why I'm competing against you for a 4.0 or 3.999 and I beat you because I took this course or whatever, you know. It's, we have students who in high school right now, and I contest to these conversations, hesitate to take AP class or college level class because they know that it will be more challenging and it may risk their, their GPA, which is, you know, maybe tied with someone else or at the top of the class. So this system looks like we're recognizing less, but we would be recognizing the students who deserve that top-tier recognition, um, without lowering any standard for anything that we're doing right now. We're just saying your GPA alone, we don't take any consideration to the types of courses you're taking. Um, and we do know that courses mean different things to students, but there's rigorous courses in all our areas, which is what we'll kind of get into, so.
And on this committee, we have two parents. We have a student, um, as well as administrative assistant, principal counselor, math teacher and science teacher. So, um, we brought this, I was brought to my attention that this was conversation. So when we get this committee together, it's not just teachers and staff that are leading us, it's parents and students that have voice as well, so. So again, this is just going back to our, you know, our Pittsville high school goal for this year. We'll talk more about it in June, but, um, trying to challenge students to take rigorous coursework. Um, kind of what we're, that said, you know, we're seeing students not take that rigorous coursework because their fear of losing that GPA or their rank, um, in their class. So here's kind of the reason why. Um, so recognizing all students who are high achieving and rigorous academics throughout their high school career, and you're gonna see some data, um, in just a little bit, but, um, you'll see, I'll just wait. Um, so the LODE system also provides an incentive for students to challenge themselves within themselves and participate in high-level courses. The class rank compares a student's performance to their peers. Their ranking is dependent upon academic performance of others in coursework, in coursework, um, that is not be, uh, may, that may not be as rigorous. Um, some students are compromising their learning in the class, uh, ranking system rather than taking courses that might be best for the post-secondary education. Um, they may choose courses that are less rigor and if you're the lose, uh, the lowering their GPA and losing that Val and Sal status. Um, and then, um, we have a student on, a sophomore student, Nora Kramer. She's gonna kind of talk to you about the why from a student perspective.
So there is a lot of competition between students to get that like number one. Sometimes it's not always known that there's that competition there, but it does cause a lot of tension in like school, like social, social activities and otherwise that is like hard to like get past, especially if you're up there and other people want to be there too. Yeah.
Is that because of the fact that, you know, there might be an individual that wants to take these tougher courses and somebody who thinks they can maybe get a better grade point average because they can take a, an easier course?
Yes, yes, yes.
As, as it stands right now, that's able to happen?
Yes. All, all class, do you need all classes same for the minute, which I said? First, we don't wanna name classes to say that, but there are certain, some classes are more rigorous and that's absolutely spot on.
You know, you said, I think when you initially hear that, the response that I always say is like, well, why don't we just weigh our classes? But there's not really any value to that also because, you know, when you apply to colleges, they unload it anyway and there's, again, we're sort of fighting the battle of how do you determine what those weightings are when there's a, a different way to go about that by keeping track without competing against someone else, um, which is a goal here.
Is it a certain number of points to get in?
Yes.
Not the top, like you're not competing against how many you take. It's everyone could actually have that. Everyone could be in the top of their class.
Yes.
If you met A and B and C.
Everyone could, everyone could. Yeah, what, what would, what is in, I guess, has been developed but needs some fine tuning are that, that chart of the points. And so we've looked at a lot of districts, um, and we have to decide, um, you know, we, we've done a lot of work, but we needed to stop at this point to say like, are we moving forward with this concept? Because then we can really fine tune the graphic, which would be, you know, a chart that says, you know, your GPA at this point, your points here and putting you in one of these three levels. Um, and I think the really cool thing is that a student can start that freshman year and start to track their progress, which is what they ask right now. Like where's my class rank, where's this? And I, I, when I get to ask that question, maybe Kim just sometimes do it because we can see it when we, when she runs report, but I hate to answer it when, you know, looking at freshman year because I don't want them to worry about that. I want them to be, you know, working hard at what they're doing and not worried about the, the 80% they got on one test in chemistry when there's a whole bunch of other things they can do to fix that later. And that shouldn't determine, you know, who gets that medal or, or that recognition at graduation. Um, and this also, you know, it doesn't lower, I think we said, but doesn't, it doesn't lower anything because what you're now doing is saying you've achieved, you know, this 3.0 or higher GPA in these courses over and over again. And we would have a separate like recognition for that moment at graduation, which is different than what we do right now. We just give them cords and they walk in and you read the program and you look at what color they're wearing and oh, that's why they're wearing purple, that K C because it's brown anyway, like different things I would like to adjust. But, um, the, there would be a, a part of the graduation ceremony where those students would, you know, whatever that you've decided as a district to be called up and really acknowledged for what that is. And I think that's sort of the, it's like winning moment. And some could say, well, who cares? But some do that right now with their GPA, I don't care what it is. Well, then that's fine, but there are some who do do and that is, is what they worked four years more for. Um, so the LODE points would be calculated at end of first semester, senior year, like we do right now for GPA core from Val and Sal. Um, and then if, did we, is a slide on there about why we would keep class rank? Is that on there? Um, so I'll just speak to that, like there is still going to be a need and a purpose for class rating. Uh, we have to rank our students because we have the academic excellence scholarship that is run, you know, that state funding, that's not our choice to say you have the highest LODE points. We are not the first district to consider this. And so the state has been asked like, what about our LODE system? And it's state statute, it is number one GPA for the academic excellence scholarship. Um, so that would still go to the number one person at the end of their first semester of senior year. Um, and they've got lots of questions about that, that's very straightforward. Maybe that would change something, but right now it cannot. And then, um, the newer Wisconsin guarantee, which is at the end of junior year, top five and top 10% of your class are automatically accepted into all UW's, um, top 10, all UW except Madison, top five, all UW, so you get automatic acceptance. You don't get any funding with that, but those things would still be a ranking that needs to be shared. Um, so we would have to track both. And scholarships that we don't control can still ask that question and they would need to put that on. So.
So you're saying that this wouldn't start until next year? It would, it would start with next year's freshman to follow them up? This ain't something that can be calculated to next year's graduation?
We're gonna have to slide. So, so, yeah.
And I'm sorry to put, I'm sorry, what's your first name?
Nora.
Nora, yes, I'm so sorry. I'm sorry I put you on the spot when I asked the question, but what would you say? Like, so when you say that, because it was kind of my biggest question because I didn't see it in the R A Q is like, who's getting the valedictorian scholarship? Which it's not as much as it used to be, right? But it's still a big chunk of money for people who need it.
Yes.
I could be very wrong, so that's why I'm asking, but I would feel like that's what you're competing for. And we can't take that away. And so I just wanna make sure that what is creating, what you're saying is the biggest reason we should consider it isn't something we have to do anyways and it actually still will create that competition that you're saying that's why this would be so, so much better to?
Yeah, so there still would be that like a little bit of competition, but it would definitely like lower it, you know, because there wouldn't be quite so much, especially because the people that need the money aren't always the people come competing for like valedictorian school, you know?
Well, because the truth is that you could actually be valedictorian and not actually even wear a court in our new system. You could get the scholarship.
Right.
By being a straight A student, but not actually qualify for any of the.
Not likely to be a candidate.
Definitely, and I would, you know, in the education of our students with this change that would have to happen, I think, you know, the, the benefit of a student taking, you know, having a transcript that's attractive for scholarships, which many of them ask for, and a transcript that's, you know, needed to apply to the colleges. There, you know, I think, I guess what I would do is advocate for students, like you're trying to build your transcript for freshman year up to say why you shouldn't be receiving additional scholarships. And so opening yourself up to ones like, you know, that you may not have the number one GPA for, but you're opening yourself up to a pool of a lot of other also strong, I guess, like continental, you know, post scholarships that exist by actually having a transcript that's showing you that you pushed yourself to take rigor and you got accepted into the school. Universities give away, um, you know, scholarships for those higher rigor transcripts as well. But yes, I don't think that would ever go away. Um, I'd be shocked if we looked back at the valedictorians for the last couple years to see if they didn't take some of those rigorous classes, it would be surprising to me.
Can I, can I offer some perspective from, uh, for those, so I actually administered the. Can I, can I offer some perspective from, uh, for those of us, so I actually administered the LADE system for six years as high school principal in my former district. So to watch all the, I came in, I came in the first year it was implemented. So I came in on round zero. So to answer your question, it could happen. It never happened in six years under the system I had where that top GPA. You're absolutely right. That, that was the only sticky thing we dealt with was the academic excellence scholarship statute. Totally had to go to the top GPA. Here's where it softened it a little bit. If you're a student who had a 3.99 GPA, but you were not that 4.0 student, you didn't really receive any honor at all at graduation. Under the LADE system, you got the gold course to stand up. And with what we did to Marissa's point is at the appointment ceremony, we said, all of you who have learned, these are students who have earned at least a 3.0 GPA and 16 honor points, please stand. And I'm telling you, it was like a magical, well, all these kids would stand with their blue cords. Then we would do 3.3 to 3.6 GPA with these cords. And then you do the gold cords last, right? And it was really like goosebumps type stuff. And all then that student who maybe didn't get that scholarship, they still get to stand. Some years we had four, some years we had 16 that got it. You know what I mean? It just depended on the year. But we never had that top GPA not receive in my six years. One of those levels of, of achievement during that timeframe, so.
Are you saying that this would not change the, so you were talking about kids, this freshman asking what their class rank is? And this won't change that at all? This won't, I know the one fact about the term, but when you're the top, the top 5% that can reveal for it to Madison, that's based off your GPA, not.
Correct. Because those are state statutes. This is really an internal.
Nate, what we noticed in year one was even our freshmen, is kids would come to the council office and they wouldn't ask about what their GPA was anymore. They would say, what's my LADE score? They wanted to know what their LADE score was, not their GPA. Now, the GPA is part of that because you have to have a 3.0 to get credit for that course on the LADE system. So you can't just go in and bolt through with the C. So they would come in and say, what's my LADE score? And after year two, the kids were tracking their own LADE scores. They knew it's like, they're coming at 12.6, like they knew where they were at, trying to get to that level they wanted to get to. This is something I really like, as a tech head guy myself, a long time tech head teacher. The department that actually has the highest representation of LADE eligible courses is our CTE department. So some may say, well, what about the people's? Well, actually that has more courses that are LADE eligible than any other department. Now, that doesn't mean the other ones are underrepresented, but it just means that stereotype of, well, the kids that go out and take the tech. No, absolutely, they're gonna have the same chances as everybody else to get up and receive those LADE honors. I found zero to in six years. I was a little skeptical when I came in, and this is, I will, I will tell you the naysayers. While we're, we're doing participation trophies, I heard this from some of the very first year, we're not doing Val Sal anymore. They said, we're not gonna name down Sal, but we're actually promoting academic excellence across the board, not just for two people. So it's the opposite of watering things down to me. It's if we have, you know, they'll talk data, the number of people that we have reaching that level, they should all receive these high honors at graduation, not just two based upon a GPA. And nothing taken away from the kids who are earning those honors. There's nothing to take away, so.
So that would, that would not be named anymore?
Absolutely not. Well, hypothetically, hypothetically speaking, they'll get into that.
So what we're proposing is that we start this with our incoming freshman year, our class of 2029. But for the next three years until those, till the, but current classes right now are officially graduated, we are recommending that we do a hybrid model. So we still honor the Val and Sal, but we also start, because I think this would help us kind of tweak some of our things, our courses, get the, you know, have kids actually invested in the LADE, have them track points, have them, you know, figure out like, hey, what, look at this class for me. Or like teachers, like, hey, you know, I had this on here, but I really don't think it's a rigor course, you know? So trying to iron out those, those couple tweaks that we need, that need to be made, but we're, we're asking that we would run a hybrid model, still honor the Val and Sal for the next, with our freshmen, sophomore, and juniors and obviously our seniors right now, but also start implementing these LADE, the LADE system. So, um, I think that they, yeah, so this is our current senior class and has a cumulative GPA. And I hope the, the kids that were just a 3.0 or higher, so their cumulative GPA is 3.69. And we would honor 25 students at graduation versus two.
So this is the top, summa cum laude would be, you know, your goal, your top, your top.
Yeah.
And it's a, yes, if we look at our seniors right now, this would be the perfect group that would benefit from recognition like this because we have so many high achieving students who've worked very hard. And they've gotten recognition in other ways, but at graduation could have, you know, have this recognition as well.
The way they can do that, so, so it would be this year's eighth grade class right now would be the first class to graduate just strictly under LADE without a Val Sal four years from now. But the way they could do it with the current classes is back, track, look at the courses taken that are on the approved course list for LADE, and they would total the points up. And that's how you would find out like current. Now, one could argue, well, the juniors would say, well, if I knew this, I would have taken more rigorous courses. That, that is, that is the case, but there's nothing you can do. We can't put the scum back in the box, right? So there's nothing you can do about that, but at least it would have those honors for those students the next three years. That would, would attain those levels of, of honor. And the sophomores would have a chance to take, you know, and freshmen to start taking more rigorous courses.
I think what the committee's doing is looking at our courses and looking at other systems that are already in place and seeing the point, because every school you look at is different. We have found, we found two schools that are very similar with the charts and at the points, but every school honors, honors classes in a different way. You know, some do a credit classes and other schools are one point, some do a credit classes and other schools are a half a point. So trying to figure out, you know, what fits and fits though, and then tailor it to our school district and our, and our students.
And some LADE systems that we looked at just do incorporate other things. You know, maybe they're president of this club or they have X amount of something, um, solo ensemble first place. Like we certainly went with academics because we felt that that was getting of, like, that's too great. We need to focus on academics. There's other ways to recognize you for those things. And that makes it very straightforward and that way there's no bias in there or opinions of what clubs or what roles or what extracurriculars are more important, then that's a whole separate thing. So this would be aligned with, you know, the GPA in that sense where it's just academics and your success in those classes.
So once this gets flushed out more, will it come back to the board for Google? I mean, I, I'm not against the concept, but like there just seems to be a lot of like, exactly how it will, I mean, or, or is that not the board, is that, that not the level that the board would get involved? I'm not sure.
It, this, this, right now, they, they didn't want to begin until they came from the board, like proceed with the fine tuning and bring it back for formal approval, like they didn't want to go further.
So you're just looking for a blessing tonight.
And they will flush out everything and they will bring it back. Because the reality is if this were gonna be implemented, it would need to be communicated by like August to February.
You're not giving handbooks probably, right?
Correct.
Yes.
So, so they're looking for, this is gonna be a lot of work, fine tuning the courses and the points. And it's more or less if there wasn't like, if the board tonight could give consent to say, yes, bring, bring us back. Like which courses, how many points, what is this gonna look like?
Are there like other ways to organize this? Because I'm kind of iffy on the idea of not having valedictorian. How do other communities do that? But we, you know, we've had one for like 90, 150 years, however, now I'm enjoying it. I mean, because like I've heard about not exactly this. I think it's wonderful. We have to challenge the kids for sure, but to not have that, that seems a little, uh, because I've heard that. I've never heard anybody say about the participation trophies or whatever, except when we talked about that. Like, and most people that goes to school near here that does this and we talked about that. We can, we can, turns are like the not, you know, you don't have valedictorian. And it's like, you know, it'd be like, you know, we're not gonna promise you.
My opinion is that, that district you might be referring to does not do the cords in the, the actual LADE record. They, they may have removed the Val Sal, but they have nothing to replace it with the honors, if that makes sense what I'm saying.
Yeah, I mean, like we could still do this and have a valedictorian, right? But.
Well, in a sense.
Because we have to have it.
We will, we just won't call it that.
We won't have that.
Because the board will even approve the academic excellence scholarship in.
We'll get a valedictorian.
It'll be public knowledge who the top of the class is because it's actually even approved at a board level. It's just we're not calling them that anymore.
Well, it's not honored at graduation, right? Because you're not considered graduation and this person got this scum.
You so pushback, and I don't, I'm gonna pushback a little bit, only on this thing is, is that, so like, what do you feel would be, because of the being able to say I was number one, is that what you're saying, like that valve piece, is that what it is?
Well, now number one's just like, it's like, you know, you were whatever, class president, prom king.
Yeah.
You know, all conference, whatever, it's like something you were and something we've always had. I mean, we talked about the things not being the way that they were, the people to upset about, that's, that's one. One, I could understand, like I had someone against stopping the writing office. I had a hard time saying, you know, I heard of this, but I have a hard time like saying, you know, why?
Well, and the slides that we have ahead of time, I, I think you have addressed some of the things about speaking at graduation.
Yes, those are the tricky questions on the last couple of slides.
Yeah.
Do you want me to go through them?
I guess, why, why couldn't you just add those words into the graduation?
The valedictorian?
Yeah.
Because it would be, like, we would be speaking out of gold, because what we're saying is, is that we, the rigor is what's important and the GPA, like the rigor, the combination. But then if we're announcing that, we're saying, but we're still gonna announce that. So it's like, the idea would be, this would be the example. When you say like, people will remember that, like being the prom king. Well, now what you're gonna have is you're gonna have a five students potentially this year that could be ten years from now sitting down at horses and saying, yeah, I was summa cum laude and had both cords at graduation, right? You're gonna have five people because they all earned that status. And it wasn't just based on the GPA piece, because the GPA piece is truly like, if, if you, if you want to strategically plan which courses and you avoid taking some courses that are gonna blow your GPA up as you get further in, they're, I'm not gonna lie to you, there are students that do that. This takes that out of the equation for kids challenging themselves and still is recognizing that excellence. And I, I would say this, Nate, I'm a traditionalist, you know that, right? Like I'm all about like traditions and stuff, but sometimes like the, the purpose behind it is a great thing, but things have evolved to the point to say that this is a way to recognize all of the folks who meet that level, not just one. This class has to be a great example because there's so many exceptional students in it. But I would tell you, every year, there's probably two or three people right on the outside of that cusp that, and this is big, I don't like, you could conceivably be out of the running for Val and Sal. It, it could be decided as a junior already, Val and Sal, junior year, you already know who it is. That just takes the whole idea of the challenging yourself for senior year, because if it's, you're chasing that GPA in this process, you still have a chance to earn summa cum laude yet because you're fighting against yourself, not against, you know, 50 other people in the class that you're trying to maintain. So I get that idea, believe me. My answer to folks who ask why would be because we want to honor everyone who is showing academic excellence, not just one student based on a single data point of who got the highest GPA without any input into what coursework that they took and stuff would be how I would answer that. You still, you can still have people that would probably be upset about it, but.
I mean, I understand, but there's not.
Well, they're talking about doing it this next year.
Just during the transition period and only because we didn't have, until you get this group of eighth graders, students will not have the four years to earn the cord, to take the coursework that they want to, to get to that level. Now, I will just tell you, my former district, the way they transitioned, they did nothing for four years. So they knew they were going to it. And what they said is this current eighth grade class is gonna be, and that was the class I inherited when I moved up high school principal, so they knew this was coming for four years, but no one got anything. The proposal this team came up with and the discussion was, and I was a part of it and I totally agree is, why not honor students the next three years that would achieve these levels with the cords, while still acknowledging the Val and Sal for those next three years because kids didn't have a chance to take those rigor courses, like the current juniors would have missed out on three years of taking those rigorous courses. So it was a way of transitioning, a soft landing of let's honor the students who will attain that while still recognizing that, you know, there are students who may have taken another challenging course, so the Val Sal would do that. And then that fourth year would be, um, the first year that would be strictly LADE, the, the LADE levels and transition from that. What, what it would do is it would allow a few years to answer questions from people and communicate. But I'm pretty certain that other districts you talked about, I'm about 99% sure, because I heard this back in the, through the grade fight, they don't do the, the LADE acknowledgement part. They just don't, they don't have these different levels of achievement. This absolutely recognizes academic excellence on all three of those levels. Like this is something that, that does take that into account.
So here's a couple of schools, some come around the area, some larger schools, small schools that have implemented this. We've looked a lot at Reeferd, we've also looked, um, a lot at Evansville. So when you think about some of our proposals that we're working towards in classes, you know, we're kind of looking at it very broad as well as kind of looking at what close like our size as well.
So these are schools from all over the state?
Yeah, there's about 30% of schools in the state of Wisconsin use a LADE system now. And that number, that was a year ago, that number's likely increased because, um, that's been rising every year for about the last probably six to seven years. It's kind of been a movement.
At our principal conference last week, Wednesday maybe, um, four schools, I believe, in our conference have a lot of systems in place, so.
When did this system first come in? I guess.
About 10 years ago, Nate.
About 10 years.
About 10, because I'm trying to think in terms of, I just gotta think back a little bit. 10 or a little bit more, because I'm thinking of my timeline down there when it came in was when you started to see high schools exploring this as a way to honor students.
This just touches on those two things that I shared that, that classroom. Will we, there, as we track, and will we, um, transfers this part? We have to have a transcript at the end of their junior year for those reasons.
That percentage, is that always been that way, like 5% including?
This part, it started this year, senior year.
This year.
And this doesn't include that, the LADE, it's not.
Raw GPA.
Total GPA, yeah. Totally.
And Nate, that's another point that you actually just reminded me of. There's a lot of different ways that just raw GPA, students get honored, like, like this, the academic excellence scholarship. Like in scholarships, some are still gonna dictate, we want GPA. Now, we had some down there that said to us, now that you're using this LADE system, we'll take your LADE score. But the ones who said we want GPA, then we still honor that. So this would be another rationale to say that GPA is still gonna matter for some of these things. It's just that we, you know, as a school district, we listed, this is what we, we are valuing because you saw the goal, the high school goal was to encourage kids to take a rigorous course. And then we kind of, you know, we're saying we're gonna value that by doing this.
But you're, but you're saying, like your feelings too, that being recognized as a LADE would outweigh this class rank and possible scholarship, that goes?
So the LADE for the actual like, you know, scholarship applications, that part is gonna be very dependent on, you know, some scholarships you're applying to before you end your semester senior year. So that LADE score isn't gonna define that. What I was saying defines that is your transcript, you know, the courses when they're looking at that you took rigor or not. Or when you, you know, a lot of students, when they fill out a scholarship application, they have to list, I took 3 AP classes. Or, you know, they list that in there, that's just one of those, from special, or M A C fee, those things that populate all of those things right into that, honors courses, AP courses, college level courses, social credit and stuff. So I think they're looking at that in that sense. We, you know, our local ones, I would say we would want to add the LADE rank, what's the word term of that? LADE rank, you know, where you're at into our scholarships. But depending on the scholarship window, that's where you fall in the LADE system isn't necessarily gonna probably award your scholarship on your overall academic achievement, split transfer meter GPA well, so.
But is there, is there like your feeling though, that the kids that are always asking about their class rank is and stuff, they're gonna not worry about that and worry about LADE system instead?
I think if they're really not scholarships and ask it, they're gonna still want to know that classroom piece. But I think the ones that are gonna focus on where they're at in LADE are gonna probably still ask like their overall LADE score or GPA, because that's important. The higher your GPA, the higher your LADE score is gonna be anyway, just can't imagine my graph. And I think, I don't, I don't know the answer to that. I think the ones that are asking about GPA are your top, your top five, who know that they're fighting between us with a couple others. And I think what I would hope to see in a couple of years is that we realize like those top people are, are fitting those top tiers hopefully anyway. You know, maybe some years we only have the two fitting the, it's just a month like you. And we, you know, it, it'll be a transition. And I'm not, I guess I'm not sure because I haven't seen this happen, but it's when you look at other schools that do it, there's positive things about it. And the scholarship piece, there's not gonna be, like I said, a place, that ranking isn't gonna be finalized for some scholarships that close in December, you know, their semester's not done until January. Scholarship, there are a lot of scholarships we don't control that are gonna ask for class rank and GPA. And then that's on the student then in their essays and in their overall, you know, listing their achievements to state, you know. you know, at this time, I may assume or summa cum laude in the class, and in their essays, they have all the rigorous courses and how it's helped them, it's just, you know, as a scholarship reviewer, hopefully what they're focusing on, but I can't guarantee that.
And I can't speak to your name with my six years of experience, is the, the predominant thing most kids were asking with their laude rank was over their GPA, other than when they needed to know GPA for specific scholarships. Uh, otherwise they were focused on that, that laude rank and knowing that the GPA mattered, because to get to summa, you had to have a three point six nine GPA and eighteen points to get there. So it was and, it was both of those things. So I'm not saying they didn't ask GPA, but the main thing they wanted to know was that the laude points, because they wanted to get to that summa level.
So where would I have seen that? Cause I feel like I missed that. Is like a minimum GPA for each of these?
We haven't put that in yet here. That's the piece where we're, we're.
I'm like sitting here thinking that all you have to do is get a certain number of points and be over a three point oh.
Those are kind of like the details that we have ideas and things created along the committee to say, to look at them, I love this, doesn't make sense, this does. But we didn't put that out there right now for you guys, because we wanted to hear these thoughts first, before we said, here's a little bit of the course.
So that actually helps.
That was on Julie.
That actually makes more sense, cause I'm like, but someone could be summa cum laude, cum laude, and because they took enough classes, got a three point oh, and they could actually have a three point zero one and be at the top. And then I'm like, well, that's kind of confusing, because that's not what happens when you get to college to be a student. Like, okay, so that is super helpful, that there are like.
I was, I was referencing my former district when I, cause that's what it is, is like to be, uh, uh, cum laude, it was three point oh, the three point three GPA and the points. The next level, then it was three point three one, the three point six. And then to be summa, you had to be three point six or four point oh to get to that level. So it's both. Which it truly is the rigors.
I got it. Okay, that is just more, that's helpful, cause I'm thinking, wow, like someone, I mean, I'm not saying that it's actually not a better thing that you take really hard, more rigor classes and end up with a three point two. It, it, you actually might be a better student than a four point oh and not taking those classes. I was just like, that is quite a change, that like someone couldn't even be at the top of their class, but, okay, I got it. Um, do you have any other key points? I'm just, um, a little caught, I wa, I don't wanna shut down discussion, but I'm also caught in a, uh, time. Um, and I know we have some other meeting issues.
We're good. Um, the last couple of slides of this for you guys to read through, um, we stole this from, from Burnwood. Um, they have a couple frequently asked questions. I mean, if you research this laude system in the state of Wisconsin, there's tons of schools that come up with just a lot of it, but there's a brochure, there's, uh, the charts, there's other things to look at, and that's what our committee has really been diving deep in, what, what fits Pitts for the goal. Um, so we have some rough drafts created of courses and, and, um, some brochures and the chart, but trying to finalize that before we move forward, I think was the biggest piece.
So really what this involves then is taking a really deep dive on course catalog, also, to really look into the rigor.
Absolutely.
And it's a living document, every year that's reviewed. So if there are new courses, they make a proposal for the laude committee, who then can add or remove courses at the request of the teachers or review them to add them. So it's a living document.
Thank you for all of your, you've been into this, and please extend our thanks to the people that are here today, uh, the teachers and also the parents. And Nora, are you the only student?
As of right now, yeah.
Try to recruit some more. Okay, very good. Well, thank you. Yes, yes, taking a lot of time, a lot of research, and it's not done yet.
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. That was, uh, item eleven A. Now we're ready for, um, number eleven, item B, which is revisions to the childcare handbook. This is where we can talk about the subcommittees work.
More or less, I guess, yes. So, backing out for a moment?
Mm-hmm.
Do I take that as, do they have verbal consent to proceed with bringing more details back to the next board?
Oh. Yeah, when, when you're ready. Well, here, there is a suggested motion, um, to approve implementing the system. Um, is that appropriate right now, or is it more bring back more information in July?
That would be the appropriate motion is, is to, the committee will fine tune the details and bring this back to the board for the, um, um, the July meeting will still work. Yes? Yes. Yep.
Um, so do we need a motion for that, or is this just a?
I think it's just a consent.
It's just a verbal, yeah. Consensus.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, revisions to the childcare handbook. Do you have a report from the committee? Subcommittee? Sure. So the two items, I actually have a question on what's here. I'm really sorry, I only caught it this afternoon. Um, so I have one, one question, but in reviewing and hand putting really great data together for us, um, you know, we had had a question of like, can we, can we turn the trajectory to be in a positive financial, um, status? And we believe that we can with, or we believe it's possible. We don't, we don't know if we can, but we believe it in numbers is possible, and that would be what the recommendation would be is that we try it, because it's possible, to increase, um, the proposed rates, which are still not, I mean, in kind of the middle ground of where other childcare centers in central Wisconsin are at. So even our increase of eighteen point one percent would not, I mean, it puts us on the middle ground of what that would look like. And then we would also, um, be looking for some more modest increases into the future, but kind of the jump, because we haven't had increases and um, we're kind of pretty substantially out of alignment where, where other childcare centers are. The team would work really, really, really hard in marketing to fill our twos and threes, twos and threes. That is critical for the success, um, moving forward. And so, um, we would be doing some marketing and other information to really say, you know, like try to build what those are. And then a pretty substantial change would be that there wouldn't be an opportunity for people to just take the summer off and not pay. And so, any other childcare center in the area, again, if you have that spot, um, if other childcare centers would have you pay to hold that spot. So certainly kids can come, that would be ideal, that kids would continue to come. Um, but we wouldn't, we wouldn't, we would change that you couldn't just take the summer off. Where my question lies is that the data is based on fifty weeks a year, which I thought we were taking away the two weeks of people being able to pick when they wanted to be off, because my guess is that we actually have ten holidays that were gonna, were gonna be closed.
Um, the fifty weeks was the week off at Christmas and the week of Fourth of July. Cause we're closed usually the Fourth of July week for deep clean and then the week of Christmas.
Correct, so.
That was the fifty weeks.
And so did you build into the data, um, individually, them being able to take just chosen days off? Yeah, so that's not, that's not reflected in the handbook, so that has to come out of the handbook. There wouldn't be like extra days off that.
Extra days that you could take for vacation days individually.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, and I, I thought, I thought that was being changed when we met, but then the.
I guess I didn't know about that, cause I missed that meeting, so. So you're saying the vacation on page fifteen was, was been modified?
We don't know, the vacation on fifteen, I don't know, cause we don't have page fifteen in our, in what was provided for us, but the number, I just gave them the one page to change. The bullet point of, it's one of the bullet points on page sixteen says about illness unless you wanna use it as one of your off days. Oh yeah, no refunds will be given for days when children do not attend for illness unless you apply to your vacation time. The problem is that the data we have in front of us that I had interpreted were fifty weeks, which means people wouldn't be able to have other days off. We are actually assigning that these are the two weeks. Otherwise then if we're getting two more weeks, we can only base it on forty-eight weeks, not fifty weeks. So I had assumed we were basing it on fifty weeks, because that's what the data was, but then I saw this and then I had to ask the question about vacation time, if that makes sense. So that's what, I don't know about that one, because that, I, I mean, I wrongly made an interpretation when we were meeting that, because it was based on fifty weeks, I think, right? Unless it's fifty weeks.
I was basing it strictly on the two weeks we were closed.
Not other days off. Okay.
And I thought we discussed at the committee meeting not having the additional two weeks days off.
I, I thought so too, but then it's not changed.
I got you. No, I got you.
Okay. So that's when I caught it, cause I actually thought we were.
Are we misremembering?
We, we never confirmed or said we were taking off the vacation days. That was something that we kept, and that's why I was this morning, I was kind of like talking about that section. That's kind of what I was trying to ask about too, because I had the same questions.
Right. Well, if there is two weeks of vacation, we can't base the financials on fifty, we have to base it on forty-eight. I mean, it's one way or the other. You can't, you can't.
And then we also, I have a question too as well, because we do have certain days that we are closed, like our holiday days, and those are also not coupled in those as well.
So like Memorial Day.
Thanksgiving.
Thanksgiving. Well, and I made the assumption that that's when we would actually be closed, would be the ten days that actually fall on holidays, not two full weeks. That's what I assumed wrongly, but when we were talking, I assumed we'd be closed Christmas Eve, Christmas Day, New Year's Eve, New Year's Day, Thanksgiving, maybe the day after Thanksgiving, Memorial Day, Fourth of July, Labor Day, and I don't know. One day that you get extra, but it has to equal ten days or you have to change the financials. Yeah.
Oh, I can bring those back to another meeting, but I, obviously, I didn't, no one, no one informed me of that, cause I was out on medical leave that day of that meeting, so I did not know that.
I don't think we talked about it, um, in that meeting, so.
But does that really change right now? I mean, could you still determine that increase? I mean,
Most of the.
Like the eighteen point one would just get us an average. You know, that, that, that would still get us to average of our locale with the other day, licensed daycares in the center. And the summer percent of, you know, what we charge, could we still determine that in this meeting and then at our next committee meeting, I can come back with the new data based on forty-eight weeks?
So I asked Pam and they had these other columns, uh, based upon a committee meeting of the twenty, twenty-two and twenty-five percent, because as, as I indicated in the committee meeting and to the email to the board Friday, even if we were to go up to twenty-five percent, it would still put us within that average range with local centers. That's how far below we are. Um, and, and I realized rate increases are not easy on anyone, but if we wanna make this sustainable, the two knowns that we have, as Julie mentioned before, filling the spots is, we're gonna do our best. The two known commodities we can use to extrapolate these numbers out is the rate increase and then charging for the summer, which would put us in line with every other center that they charge for. So we are, we are on an island on that. Those two things would be known dollars, and, and that was why I was in support of maybe looking at even a, a higher increase than eighteen point one percent. That was just something that we put in there, cause it would still keep us within that realm of, of average compared to Northwood County centers.
Okay, I have a question. In terms of the, and I, I, I don't think we have all the financials here. Um, but so in terms of the increase, um, you indicated that you did your calculations for fifty weeks, Pam?
On the projections of a year.
Right.
Not just the weekly rates, yes.
Okay. Is that, were those projections based on being at capacity? Or was it at?
Twenty-five percent. Well, no, I had done multiple scenarios. The scenario that would work would be full staffed, full capacity.
To get to the.
To get to the break even point.
Well, a little bit. So that would be the best case scenario.
And that was at the eighteen point one percent?
Correct.
If we increase that percent, obviously it would get us closer to the break even or slightly making that profit.
And it's a heavy lift, because I can't remember exactly, but I mean, it is multiple additional kids, like maybe ten?
Thirteen.
Thirteen. I mean, it's, it's a heavy lift.
Yes.
Well, and also it's not something you can scale up to immediately. I mean, it might take ten months to get fully enrolled. And so my, my concern would be, yeah, the amount of time it's gonna take us to get fully enrolled.
That's why I'm a supporter of raising that rate and then charging the summer fees, because that is absolutely gonna shrink that while we're in that process, cause we don't want it to get bigger. We want it to be zero, but, uh, while we continue to work through that. And once again, it, it's still, if you talk about, if you're a person who utilizes our childcare center, you're already paying the lowest rates in Northwood County, and this is gonna put you at average and so this isn't like we went from the lowest to the highest, where you're gonna have people doing an S X's. I don't believe is that people are gonna understand it. And really what this is about is the sustainability of the childcare center. If we don't do this, if we, if, if the board chooses not to raise these rates and charge the summer, I, I will go out right now and tell you, I don't think we will continue operating after next year. Um, the, the financials will not work.
Can I just make comments?
Yes.
So when we started childcare, um, they, you know, I don't know if, I mean, if you, cause they already were on the board's time, but we set our rates purposely at fifty percent of everybody else in the county. And we've only increased annually between three and five percent. So we, we just can't catch up now unless we do a big increase. Um, the projections, and I did not know I was to give you all the data, but our projections were, um, a bigger increase right away to get us at average or a little above, and then smaller increases to take into account inflationary increases and try and keep people with, you know, what everyone else is probably doing.
Yeah, and we did talk in the meeting that we need to cut into the deficit by a lot. And I think to Julie's saying, is it possible that we could get all the way there in one year? It, it's not impossible, I guess is a better way to put it. But if we can start to show that a plan will work to make this sustainable, like if we do some of these things, and you still have such an absence of revenue, that doesn't make sense for us to be operating, then we would know for sure. So I think the proof thing is to raise the rates. We need a lot of revenue for that to solve this. I mean, the, the reality is, is we're at a plus one hundred thousand dollar deficit. I mean, that's the start proof. And it's gonna take some drastic changes to try to reverse that trend right now. And I, I didn't have that data, Pam, to share the, the decision to charge that fifty percent back, cause I wasn't here.
Right.
And then it would make sense, as you're chasing your tail, you're never catching up unless you do a significant increase once you start at fifty percent.
Okay, fifty percent, you mean like the media?
No, we were charging half of what everybody else was charging.
Yes.
To get people here, to get this established.
At its inception.
Yes.
See, I was not aware of that, felt tonight, cause I didn't, I did not have that on YouTube.
Well, right now, we haven't had enough staff to fill, but we now have another staff and maybe another one interested that. Um, but, yeah, I mean, I was pleasantly, um, I was pleasantly surprised that at least there is a formula that can get us to a positive thing. I think now we need to market, tell the community, this is what it would need to look like, and we would need additional students in order to have the need for us to continue to run it. We unfortunately, you know, for people who are currently here, we need to get our rates in alignment that are still in the lower to mid median of what charges are being charged in order for us to be able to sustain it. We need to not be able to let people take the. We need to not be able to let people take the entire summer off and not pay to hold their spot. And I think we need to figure out how we actually are open all but fifty weeks. So that we can actually maximize the revenue for a fifty week. I don't care what days we're closed, but I think we need to only be closed two weeks because that's what makes it work. And then, do I think we're going to actually achieve it in one year? Absolutely not. It's going to take us a little bit to ramp up, but if we're trending in the right direction and everyone responds positively from the perspective of us trying to get this on the right track. I think then, you know, we continue, you know, it might take a couple of years, but we're going in the right direction.
I think we'll know a year from now whether it is possible.
How have parents responded so far if you've mentioned that there's going to be an increase? What have you heard?
Pam really brought it up. I mean, we've increased yearly, but usually they don't.
My three percent.
It's expected. Honestly, it's expected.
Five percent's not twenty percent.
But I want, I want to point out the chart here to folks because I get that like twenty-five percent or eighteen percent sounds like a lot. If you look at that top line, so the infant classroom, so this is for an infant, our most expensive children, right, Cap? So right now they're paying two oh seven a week. If we increased it twenty-five percent, they would pay fifty-two dollars more a week, ten dollars a day to have an infant in our childcare center. So like, I'm not trying to say that doesn't matter, but I don't want, I just want to be clear. This isn't like it's going to like double the cost for people, like fifty-two dollars over five days with the convenience of having your infant here at the childcare center. But it goes back to this, I can't say enough. We are not, the, the, there's either going to be a childcare center or there's not after a year. And without doing the rate increases because of what Pam talked about, we were so far behind that we're not even, it's not even about being competitive. We're not even in the same ballpark as these other centers. We need to at least get to the point where we're sustainable with those fees. The reason for the bigger jump is we started so far behind. And then we've only been doing those three or five percent increases. And now we'd be even on years when inflation was probably eight percent. I doubt we increased eight percent.
No, we didn't.
Yeah.
It would have been sustainable. I mean, we kept our costs at minimum, you know, but, you know, we had the full, or the staffing portion, but not enough students to cover the staffing. Does that make sense?
I agree with you.
On a steady basis, we haven't. So that's where the budget projection's at seventy-five percent capacity has fallen short because of that.
Okay. So, um, Nate and Julie, you were the two coordinators on the committee. What do you think we should do in terms of the percentage increase? What, what would you recommend? The eighteen, the twenty, the twenty-two? What, Jason is kind of weighed in, but I want to hear what you both have to say.
I personally feel it should be closer to the twenty-five. Because if we're already doing five a year and we're getting, like Bill gave it, we're farther and farther behind each year. And, you know, it's a, it's a terrible spot for us to be in because, you know, you know, it's fifty dollars a week. That's a lot of money to, to people that are working. And just because maybe they gotta, you know, they weren't paying as much as they were three years ago, it doesn't matter to them now as they're doing their budgets. But at the same point, they're also going to be a bad spot if we have to close daycare. They don't have any, any, any kids to put their kids right now. So it's, you know, kind of a lose, lose, but if we're gonna, you know, have this be something sustainable, we have to raise it as much as we can to get us at where everybody else is. Maybe a little bit more given all the extra benefits they have because we can't, you know, we're not, we're not a business, right? We can't lose money like, like this.
Right.
And especially if you're talking about this much. So if we raise it this much and we're still running a deficit of, you know, twenty thousand or more, we'll have to have a very trade discussion about if this is even worth the taxpayers' dollars. Because it's, it's a lot of money we're outputting for, like how many kids are in thirty?
Thirty-seven.
Yeah. And Nate, for fear of having my car keyed after a board meeting, I would indicate like right now what's happening is taxpayers are subsidizing the, the cost that we're running a deficit out. So I get it that fifty dollars is a lot for families. And I genuinely mean, I know this board feels the same, but we want to keep this open for our community and for our families. And we also have to be conscious of the fiscal impact.
Yeah, so it's like what Julie, like what Julie says is going to be really hard and why I agree, like it's not, it is possible. It's not impossible, but we're going to raise the rates a lot and then expect our capacity to grow a lot at the same time. While we have to spend money to recruit to try and get people to come here. So it's a lot of, it's going to be a lot of extra costs on top of this. So, you know, when you talk about the recruiting costs and stuff, that has to come from our rates. It can't come, it can't keep coming from you.
Julie, what are your thoughts? So the data that we were shown showed us that eighteen point one percent with no summer, like you can't, like you have to pay throughout the summer and fifty weeks works if what they're proposing puts in place, um, if you can make it work. My two cents would be if we can't fill the classrooms, it won't matter if it's eighteen point one or fifty percent. And so I would prefer to do one of two things. I would prefer to just do the eighteen point one because it's either going to work or not work. And why overcharge them if we can actually make everything else fall into play? Or if we want to increase the rates by twenty-five percent, then figure out the difference between the twenty-five percent and eighteen from a financial standpoint. And you, they can still have those days of their own days that are closed. I mean, like, because we've got, the other piece of this is it has to equal fifty weeks. Otherwise, all of the data that we saw, there isn't even anything to present to the board. Because I can't tell you that we actually will land financially stable because it's based on fifty weeks. And do I think we'll hit it year one? No, I don't even know if we'll hit it year two. And I actually, and I know I'm recording, someone come key my car. But I actually believe that this is important enough that if we're going in the right direction, that it is something that we need just continue to work at going in the right direction. It isn't, I don't feel like we have to go from where we're at to nothing. I just want to see that we're going in the right direction and we have a path that we actually think we can achieve. The other thing as a group we have talked about is, you know, if we can't make it work from a district perspective, we would also want to entertain if there is anyone private who would want to come in and rent the space from us so that we're still having a childcare here. So, um, and whether someone would want to or not when they look at our products, I can't answer that question. But, um, we would want to, I mean, we, if, if we have to go in that direction, we would want to do that. So my recommendation would be eighteen point one. Summers have to be paid, uh, whether your child's here or not. And I don't care how you slice dice, whether parents get choices, we pick the dates, whatever that is. But there are only ten days that we are actually closed or that people can have off not paying because that's what it was based on. So that's my recommendation. Because I don't want to charge people an extra amount because we could be wrong. Yeah, we could be wrong about all of it if we can't get enough students in. And I think what we're saying is we're going to give it our best shot, like if we can actually achieve all of the outcomes. And so I recommend holding it to that.
I agree, I agree with what you said about the, the percentage. Because you're right, if we don't fill up, it doesn't matter. Raise fifty percent and still have gotten to that.
Correct.
The only thing I'm like, I knew, I mean, I know I said disagree with you, but so like if you put a finer point on it, like moving a little bit in the right direction isn't an option. We got to move all like fifty to eighty percent of that deficit.
Correct.
Like in a year.
Correct.
You need to do that. So maybe eighteen percent will make it easier to get people in.
Yeah, um, I have a question. What, what are the plans for recruiting more two ones?
Twos and threes.
Twos and threes.
Cap, you want to talk briefly about what's been discussed so far?
Yeah, she and I actually haven't had a chance to really talk about it at all. But when we originally started, we did radio ads, um, we held open house, things like that that helped. Plus we put stuff in the newspaper, we'll put it on website, flyers around town and stuff maybe would help. Flyers in the buildings right now isn't going to help because we don't have a lot of activities in the buildings right now. But I don't know that a lot of people even think to bring their twos and threes to childcare. I don't know what's happening to all the two and the three-year-olds, you know? Because we can't just keep growing from our infants to our, you know, from infant up because we can have more students in the twos and the threes. So it's not, the math will never work if all you're doing is moving the kids up. So we need to get some of those twos, you know, those twos and threes in.
Well, how do you, how do you advertise just that, that?
Well, I think we just say, you know, we have got the A T's and our twos and our threes right now. And, you know, you just tout all the benefits and, I mean, I've got flyers out there. I have radio ads written from before that can be tweaked.
I mean, like we talked about in the meeting, like working with employers, like getting an offer from people that.
Right. That's when we put flyers around town with the businesses so that their, their staff know that there's childcare here. So instead of maybe having their childcare.
Probably just as important as what we're doing wrapped up.
Right.
It's important to work.
And now that we're seeing an increase in housing, it's important to give the information to realtors so that they're sharing the perspective of people moving to town that we have in childcare center. And I, and I will too, I will say like, even with a rate increase, we're still, our rates are going to be attractive to people looking when they're comparing. That's average. The definition of average is that, you know, we're right in the middle. So we're not going to be at that upper end where it's going to scare people away. And I did just want to clarify that eighteen, Pam, you can tell me for sure, at the eighteen point one percent, we would still be projecting, if we went to full capacity, we would still project about a twenty-two thousand dollar deficit next year. Is that accurate, give or take?
I can't, I don't remember the exact number, but I believe there was a small deficit yet in year one.
Sixteen or twenty-two dollars in year one. So, so the eighteen point one, perfect scenario, full capacity, all that, would still have a deficit. Which is why I'm going to make a nudge to the board in the direction of at least considering one of those higher rates. Just because I feel like that should be our goal. I know it's not likely to be that in year one. I feel like the number should be, we shouldn't be shooting for sixteen thousand dollar deficit. If we're going to shoot for, if everything works out, we should shoot for that break even. We may not get there, but at least we tried. And that, that would be the only thing I would propose was saying why would I consider the twenty, the twenty-two percent?
Like Julie, I don't think it really matters what percent we pick. If we don't fill up, it doesn't matter. We'll, we'll pass eighteen, make it more affordable for people and we shoot for sixteen and land at seventy-five thousand.
When this was started, this idea, I sat out there and I can remember the discussion going on here. And the simple fact that it was decided this may never turn a profit, this may always be a loss. But the long-range benefits will outweigh the loss that it will project. Has that changed?
Well, to the tune of a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, that, I don't think that was what was like a visual. To your point, Rick, I don't think this needs to make money or even break even. If it's running twenty thousand dollar deficits, I think the value of saying we're capturing students, we're going to stay as great.
I agree. We can't handle that kind of a loss.
Yeah.
But we can't handle a loss.
Absolutely. It, it just, to not to this level and in order to dig ourselves out of the hundred and sixteen thousand dollar hole, it takes some drastic moves to dig ourselves out and then we can start crawling up after that.
But we have to understand that we may never turn a profit.
Absolutely.
Okay, so I, I'd like to kind of like take a, take a deep breath and take a step back and, and look at this in two parts. In terms of, um, requiring, um, payment in the summer. Is that something we could vote on separately? And then, because it, well, first of all, we haven't discussed it hardly at all. But I'm wondering, is that something that is going to be easier for us to build consensus on? And then to move forward with the rate increase? Because I, I mean, I just want to keep things moving.
That's part of the handbook, particular comment, that's the handbook. The, the summer would be the handbook. So if you voted.
And we can do that next time because there's updates, but Julie quite a lot.
Right. Just a nation that has to get all of something.
So we can go on the rates and do the handbook, which has a similar part on K X meeting. Because there's, the change is.
So the handbook language, we need whatever percent or full, full hundred percent now so that we can start charging it on June second.
Right.
Because we have to give thirty days notice. So, so you kind of.
Yeah, we won't even make it for June second. Two weeks for that? Okay, she thought it was thirty days. It's just thirty days for them, right?
Okay, so that is something we absolutely have to move forward on.
Is the summer rate.
The summer rate. I mean, just because it's presented this way, I mean, we need the.
And it's not a summer rate. It's just the rate, it's just the rate increases. It's not a summer rate.
Yes, right.
And I feel like you could vote on those two items separately.
Sure.
Yeah, and I will say though that unless we're, and, and I was pretty clear in our, in our subcommittee. If as a board we decide we're not charging a summer rate, that is a, I, I believe what we're saying as a board is we are absorbing that as an employee benefit. Because the childcare center will never get out of that hole. And so we can't put it on the childcare center to make that up because they won't. That would be the board deciding that that is an employee benefit because that's who uses it, is our employees. And I'm not saying we should or shouldn't decide that. It just can't be put on the, like, like we would be in a sense deciding this amount of money, we're making a transfer to the, you know, to the, we're using this much money because we're using it just like we use health insurance or paying benefits insurance or whatever that would look like. Because the childcare center couldn't ever dig themselves out of that.
No, right.
Okay, just making sure that we understand that's what that means.
So, having, is that bad? Could we go ahead? I, I would entertain a motion to go ahead and, um, accept the revision to the handbook.
Uh, we're not ready to revise the handbook. That's coming back to the next meeting, but we can do the rate sheet.
No, wait, 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 wait. I thought the handbook.
Handbook is only the language that, just the language to reserve your summer spot.
That's the only change.
Hey, that's the only change.
Oh, yeah, I thought Nate, you said that the summer thing is in the handbook.
Any day you want for the whole day. Yep, it's not.
Well, we'll be charged weekly. Yeah.
And I believe your service, Pam, the days off part of it's.
Oh, it wasn't changed.
We did not address the days off.
I know, but that's what Julie was brought, which is that is the days off is what would not be.
So we can change it from now, I guess for this part.
This part, that's what we would ask is the board approve this particular part of the handbook now and then we can bring the, the other portion back.
Part there.
Correct.
Yes.
When Tab has a brings off with other revisions.
Yes.
This was just to get this in place from you.
Well, but, but I just thought that Mary hadn't asked us to, like, that, that we had more discussion on this. This, what's highlighted is not about rates. What's highlighted is about paying for summer spot or not, which is what I thought we just, you just asked if we could pull out and.
Yeah.
Just separately. So we can, we can approve the rate sheet that the rates are just going up and not approve this. But we need to approve that. The summer thing because it's going to be summer.
Starting June first, they would be paying the rates.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay, sorry.
And then we'll bring the additional revisions back, including those days when Tab normally brings the handbook back. This was a little bit sooner than normal because we need that summer rate to go into effect when the summer starts.
So in any other discussion about pros and cons related to the summer rate?
So then, can you read what I was going to say?
A current enrolled child who will not attend during the summer, but will return in the fall will be charged weekly at their most recent weekly rate to reserve their spot.
And I don't know if you're going to answer Rick's question. They absolutely got the right to send their kid five days a week, eight hours. They can bring their kid in for the full month because they're paying for it all summer long or any of those days. And that is, this is what the other centers charge full summer rates. There are no discounts for summer spots. So this would bring us in line with the other centers in front of charging.
I, I understand why this needs to be done right away and I support having it done right away. But I, I think it could be worded a little differently. You know, like a currently who will not attend during the summer. Well, a currently, a currently enrolled, just all enrolled children will be charged for the entire year. Even if they're not, that's not right. But even if they're not coming during the summer. I, I mean, we, we need to keep in there that somehow that concept, Jason. I, I mean, we, we need to keep in there that somehow that concept, Jason, that, yeah, you could, your kid could come in the summer, then tell it's two days a week, three days a week, five days a week, did it say?
It didn't have it.
What's lined out, up above there, there was a lined out, it was kind of stuck in there where they basically didn't have to pay to hold their spot.
We just removed, who will not attend during the summer. So a current, a currently enrolled child, uh, who will return in the fall will be charged weekly at their most recent weekly rate to reserve their spot, um, with the ability to use.
Right, I mean, we're trying to address reserving your spot during the summer. I mean, that.
There will be some people that will take advantage of this. And it's like, I, in a good way. I mean, I'm not meaning take advantage of it like in a nefarious way.
But send their kids.
But they'll send their kids, like, yeah, a couple days a week, mom wants a break. Or dad wants a break. I mean, I would. So, a currently enrolled, just, you know, people will pay fifty weeks a year, whether they're here or not.
But not necessarily fifty weeks, because we do have a few part-time people that we do accept until, I mean, if a full-time person comes and they can bump a part-time person. So, I mean, it could be somebody that's only two or three days. So you can't say they get the full weekly rate. Um, it's whatever they were charged per week. So they, maybe they were only charged three days a week at the time summer occurred.
I, I think.
It's just like all the kids are equal, I mean, that's really what Mary answered, I'm saying. Cause if we want to, you know, anybody has paid to them.
Well, if all that was ever in this is the and or child will not attend during the summer, but will return in the fall, if that's all that's ever in here, then, then that should all be, that has to be removed. It's implementation, right? So the implementation is, I mean, you're putting an extra statement in here that already is assumed, with that statement being removed, that you have to pay to be here. The problem is, it hasn't been our practice, so there's some communication that needs to happen around it. I don't know if we actually, I mean, it's fine to spell it out, but I don't know if it's necessary.
I feel that there's enough people that have utilized not paying any summer care that we need to spell it out. That if they want to reserve their spot for the summer, they need to pay.
And they can use that.
And they can use it, that's the part.
Oh, definitely.
Yeah, but I'm not even coming to Mary Ann, that's what I'm saying. That statement doesn't really clearly state that for people like you. I might read that as saying, and I know that sounds silly to say, well, of course, I can send them, but I think clarification of, clarification of that, of you have to pay your full amount, but you can send your kid any, any of those days that you want to.
Your full amount that you were paying at the most recent.
Current rate, yep, and you would contend to that. So a currently enrolled child who will not attend regularly during the summer, but will return in the fall, will be charged weekly at their most, uh, recent weekly rate. To me, that answers that question.
Regularly.
Cause regularly, cause that means you can, if we just add the word regularly.
Instead of will not attend during the summer.
Will not attend regularly during the summer. I don't know, or on a regular basis. Yeah, that all down, it clears my.
I have actually, um, all enrolled children will be charged during the summer months regarding, regardless of usage to the.
At their most recent weekly rate?
Will be charged during the summer months regardless of usage to their reserved spot, but weekly rate or something like that. I don't, why don't we just say, um, a current enrolled child who will not attend regularly during the summer, but will return in the fall, will be charged at their most recent weekly rate to reserve the spot. You can still send your child throughout the summer as usual to care.
Excellent. That would be fine, just adding that sentence.
So, just one additional component. I would actually recommend that it would be, you'll be charged at September's weekly rate, only because if a parent is gonna send their kid all summer and they're gonna drop to ones in September, I think that the compromise we can provide is we're gonna charge you at where we're reserving the spot, not at a higher rate. And the reason for that is because if I actually sent my child all summer, on the day they turn one, you're gonna lower my rate. But if I don't send my kid all summer, on the day they turn one, I have to still pay for them to be an infant until I come back. So, I mean, we know what they're gonna go into in the fall and the waiting on spot for them to actually over, I just feel like we're overcharging if we're making them pay. I think that they should pay at their, if you're not sending them for the summer and all you're asking is to hold, where we would compromise is we will charge you, and it might be the same rate, because they might not. If your kid's gonna turn the next age over the summer, we'll actually charge you the lower rate. Cause that's the spot we're holding.
Yes.
We're not holding the infant. Now, if you're sending your kid, because if you send your kid, as soon as they aren't an infant anymore, your rate's gonna drop.
Right.
So now you're being penalized because you don't send your kid.
So what if we say at the most recent weekly rate or the September rate, whichever is lower?
Perfect, that sounds great. Um, I would like to have that read again in its entirety. So, Deb has it down.
I, I got it too, I can share it tomorrow.
I would like to have it read again in its entirety, so Deb can have it.
So a current enrolled child who will not attend regularly during the summer, but will return in the fall, will be charged weekly at their most recent weekly rate or the September rate, whichever is lower, to reserve their spot. You can, you may still send, I'm gonna change that to may, so ten, ten. You may still send your child throughout the summer as usual for care.
Okay, how do board members feel about that? Okay, then I would entertain a motion to approve the revision, the one revision to the parent handbook with the verbiage as read by Pam.
Are we doing rates heavily?
Yes.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded to approve the one update to the parent handbook based on what Pam read.
All in favor?
I am. Opposed? Motion carried.
I, I forgot to ask this when we were in the tokens, we accept, like, if someone qualifies for other assistance.
Yes.
Oh, then we accept all of them.
We accept those.
Yes, so shares.
Okay, yeah, perfect. I believe the EBT thing is still going on as well?
Great, yes.
Fantastic.
Okay, rates.
I, I would make, and of course, I'm a different person, different things, and I can't actually not listen to that. Um, I, I would make motion that we accept the EBT.
I would second that motion, I think two point one.
We can always make additional, we don't have to only go up two or three percent. But I think we should see if we can move the rest of the needles before.
Revisit it next year and see if it makes any difference.
Probably revisit it in six months, because we need these positions. I mean, I don't know that we can actually go all the way another year if we can't find people to be in the childcare center.
Yeah, I think by the start of school year, we'll, we'll, we'll have discussion.
Correct.
Other plans have to be made, yeah.
Correct, it's not just this movement, there are other movements that have to be, but I feel like, um, I would, yeah.
May I?
Yeah, certainly, certainly.
I hate to be this voice. I would just say, we all know we're still gonna be running the deficit regardless, we know that. I just don't feel like if we're making an increase, going that extra bit, now would be better than coming back in six months and asking for an increase again. That's all I'm saying, is that we take a bite of the apple now, like, we know that we're still gonna be running the deficit, unless we have lighting in a bottle and fill it. I just would be very remiss to recommend coming back in six months and asking for another increase. I think the optics of that would be much worse than just taking the bite right now, that we know we're gonna need to take.
Yeah, well, but, I mean, the, the other side of that point is, if this doesn't get us anywhere near, we won't have to worry we're gonna re-increase, so we'll have to have to make other plans.
But we will have less of a deficit, and I, I'm thinking in terms of holistic picture for the district budget is, is it's gonna have to come.
But this is the plan to get us super close. So if the plan to get us super close doesn't get us super close, or even promote close, then we kind of, no.
I absolutely, I get, I get it, and obviously, we will improve, but whatever the board decides, I just, I wanted to throw that out there, that we, like, we know. Um, I, I would, it's not my decision, I would strongly oppose coming back in six months. Like, I don't know what would cause us to do that in six months, what would make us in six months come back and ask for a higher rate? I guess, I mean, it's not a rhetorical question.
Yeah, I don't, well, I'm not sure if that's what you do, but I think you would talk about it. I don't think we need another reason.
No, I don't think you would do increases this month. It would be in three months, do we have five of the thirteen kids that we need? And then in another three months, do we have three more? I mean, are we, are we moving, cause that's where the money is, more than, I mean, yes, increasing rates helps, but the big chunk of the money we need is increasing enrollment.
Yeah, I think we might have been close, I don't think we're gonna, we can't wanna take the risks for the three months. It's like every year.
Once a year, usually.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You just got one chance at a big increase to dig us out of that, go back to that hole, and I'm, I'm gonna be done beating this dead horse. That Pam talked about, that the district was in a hole from the get-go, charging fifty percent of what everybody else was doing. And in order to get out of that hole, we're gonna have to take a, we only get one shot at this. I doubt this board would ever be able to hit a twenty percent increase again, where any of us would get out, right? So we got one shot at this. That was the only thing I was bringing up, is that these, these types of increases, I wouldn't envision this in the future. And we only had one shot at it, that, that would be it, so I'm gonna zip higher.
And quite frankly, I'm personally not real crazy about an eighteen percent increase. I'd rather roll with twenty or twenty-two. Twenty-five is a really big bite. Um, but I think we need to do more than eighteen.
I agree, I think it would go more.
Red, what do you think? Chris and Rick have been relatively quiet.
I think we should go more than eighteen also.
And I think eighteen, that's thirty-seven more a week, that's seventy-five more a week. You have two kids in daycare, um, that's a big speed bite already. I, I agree with Julie, I don't think, whatever, if we raise it eighteen or twenty-five, the twenty-five's gonna be a short gain. The big thing is we have to get more students enrolled. The, the, uh, two hundred and forty-two dollars per student will come a whole lot more than the fourteen dollars difference between eighteen percent and twenty-five percent. It, it's gonna come down to, we just need more.
Oh, yeah.
People in, in our daycare.
But I think what I'm hearing Jason say, and this is kind of what I'm saying too, is it's not the dollar amount that's gonna make that huge of a difference, it's more the concept of the increase.
It's fifteen dollars more on top here from eighteen to twenty-five percent, fifteen dollars a month, a week more.
And still keeps us at average with other centers, is I guess that's the piece that, like, having, I, my kids had not managed childcare for seven years, eight years, I have three, and at the same time, our rates at that point, seven years ago, were higher than these weekly rates. I was paying per child higher than this. These are very affordable, it's been a wonderful thing for obviously families to take advantage of. We wanna keep it, so that families can continue to take advantage. And like, that's, that's why, you know, my argument would be, is that even with that increase, it still keeps us near average with the other centers. So it doesn't throw us out of lap, which is just an indicator of how low we've been for so long with these rates, and yes, people are used to it. And I go back to.
And our current enrollment is about twenty-two to twenty-five thousand a year, between eighteen point one and twenty-five percent.
Can you say that number again?
Well, I mean, I don't know how many have a part-time versus full-time, so I just stick, we have thirty-seven students, I based it on like low thirties, because we gotta get a couple part-time people together to make that work, so. But somewhere in the twenty-five thousand dollar range is the difference on an annual basis of income between eighteen point one and twenty-five percent.
And that's at current enrollment?
At current enrollment.
So twenty-five thousand dollars, and then if you increase the enrollment, that's why I say it does matter, is we do need to increase the enrollment. We're talking about a significant source of revenue with the increased enrollment.
Well, so I know the family in the community we talked about was eighteen point one percent to get us to that close to twenty thousand dollars. Breaking even, which percentage would be a break-even target?
Well, that tells me, what, Pam, my quick math, if twenty-five percent would gain us twenty, twenty-five grand, it would be twenty-three, twenty-five percent.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, my, where I have my hand up though is, even at twenty-five percent, we're lower than the maximum being charged right now in North Burnwood County, per the report that was issued.
Why, I think it, there's value in being lower than maximum.
Right.
I mean, I don't think there's a lot of.
Below maximum, that's an arguing question.
But we, but we've exceeded being in the meeting.
Yeah, where will that put us, the twenty-five percent would put us approximately where?
Below maximum, so maximum at an infant was two sixty and two fifty for twos and less.
And that's with last year's rates, though, so we're working on what these centers reported February's rates. So that's making the assumption that these other centers are not gonna increase rates to.
Two sixty, they were at two fifty-nine at twenty-five percent.
That's what we.
With the assumption they would not raise rates.
Right, if they do not raise rates, correct.
Yeah, I think we should always be shooting to break even, not shooting, is there, you shoot to break even, you're still gonna lose.
That's what I say, that's what I hear me earlier.
We're gonna lose. Yeah, but there's a certain comfort of loss, because we're not a business, we don't have to make up this money loss at all. It's, it's, we need to not do it next year, and then you have to, that we need not do it.
Right, right.
You know, I feel like that twenty-two percent might be a happy medium where it's still gonna close that gap. Maybe that makes, you know, during the discussion, or maybe that would be in everybody's comfort zone.
I'd rather do twenty.
My, my comfort, my comfort zone is giving the parents an eighteen percent increase. Looking back at our referendum, if you went out to people with an eighteen percent increase versus twenty-five, we would've hit a lot more. Saying it's gonna be a twenty-five, no, I'm saying, it's a big increase, eighteen percent. Twenty-five makes it just seem like a huge increase. And eighteen, we're gonna break even if everything went perfect. But the goal, when we started, when this was started here at Pittsburgh, was never to break even. The goal was to give the people a place for their kids, and then hopefully the Rudolphs, the Vespers would keep their kids here, and the benefit would come around in long term.
I mean, obviously, that didn't turn out rate-driven.
I mean, so I, I didn't remember that fifty percent.
Cause, cause I'm speaking of the referendum, a hundred thousand dollars of our levy is gonna be related to the deficit from childcare, over a hundred thousand dollars. So, like, that's actually, we're saying the overall bill rate, which is part of our general, and that's, that's that piece. Is I get all this, believe me, like, I, I am all about our, you know, supporting our families, but the reality is that money's gotta come from somewhere, and, and the point is, and this is gonna sound terrible, the other taxpayers are subsidizing the childcare when we're running those types of deficits. And that's why, I know that percent sounds big, but I think some of those people I communicate with during the referendum would be, well, the, we're paying more taxes to subsidize childcare for, for a small amount of families.
Yeah.
I get it, like, I get both sides, that's why I say, like, to me, what's palpable, we're doing everything we can here to balance the needs of the families, but also the needs of the taxpayers. That, that's my only rationalization.
Okay, so, one last question. These rates could go into effect when?
July first.
July first. Okay. Do we, ideally, we should make this decision tonight. I don't see consensus right now on the board. Um, I wonder if we need to take some, take a step away.
We can't wait till it's over.
I, I would like to finish. I think we need to take a step away, and I think we need to consider a special board meeting to go over this. I realize that's not ideal, maybe we could tack it on to the, um. I realize that's not ideal, maybe we could tack it on to the, um, subcommittee for the edu-, for the Education Foundation, I'm just, I'm just throwing that out as a possibility.
May the twentieth be?
Yeah. Because I don't see consensus here. Um, I think we've been talking about this for forty minutes or so, I, I think I would benefit from stepping aside and pondering this a little more, but if people don't wanna do that, if you wanna make the decision tonight, I'm then we do.
Always do. I would just ask this question, what information could we bring that would move people by the twentieth? And it's not rhetorical, like, I'm asking, is there any additional info on the rate?
I wa- I was fine going with the eighteen percent, you know, because we talked about it.
I apologize, I said I was gonna bring it up.
And so now it's like, so now I do feel like we need it, I don't wanna leave again, I mean, this, because we voted, Julie and I met several times on this, but.
I mean, I, I would go with what Jason's recommendation is, if you think we need to go at twenty or at twenty-two, you're the person who needs to operationalize this. I, again, I feel like there are so many factors that go into this being something that's successful, and my only reason to stay on the lower end of the rates is I just, especially if we're gonna hit towards the top, I don't want to lose people when our biggest when the biggest driver is that we actually need the combo of additional rates and more students joining in order to make this work.
The board will not offend me by going against my recommendation.
I just, like, we don't, like, I don't understand, we don't need to be making the handbook and stuff, give us a plan, like, and if it's twenty-two, it's eighteen, whatever. And then if this doesn't work, then we'll reevaluate, we'll monitor it as it goes along, but, I mean, I would like, you know, you were Pam, or somebody tell, like, give us a plan, and that was the whole committee meeting was about, give us a plan, give us a number, and we'll go on, we recommend it. So if it was eighteen, and that's not good enough, then it's something else, if it's twenty-two or thirty, I mean, I don't really care, we just have, like, let's know the plan, just.
My, my recommendation, and, and I was clear to the board, it's not to be impugn, but I was gonna recommend that we look at a higher rate than eighteen, blah, 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 I was one, but I would recommend that during this discussion at the board level, that if we went with that twenty-two percent increase, it's kind of finding a happy medium where it's gonna get us closer to that perfect scenario, we will shrink that twenty-two thousand dollar deficit, closer to that break-even point. So, if you're looking for me to make a recommendation, I would recommend that during this conversation with the board, that we go with a twenty-two percent increase.
We have a motion on the table and a second to, um, have a proposed increase of eighteen point one percent. There's two ways we could handle this, we could vote on that motion and defeat that motion, and then make another motion. And then Deb, what's the procedure for withdrawing a motion that's already been seconded? Is it even possible to withdraw a motion that's been seconded?
I'm making that's what you got. And first time I don't have my book with me.
Just vote.
But I would, I would vote.
It could pass.
Yeah, I would vote on it and, you know, if it fails, then you do another vote.
Yeah, I think that's the urbanist way to do it.
I agree.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to have a rate increase of eighteen point one percent. All in favor, vote aye. Opposed, nay.
Nay.
The motion fails.
The motion fails. I would entertain a motion to move forward with another percent increase.
I'll make a motion to increase the rates as of July first, twenty-five by twenty-two percent.
By twenty-two percent, okay.
That's what you're recommending, right, Jason?
Yes.
I would second that motion, twenty-two percent.
It's been moved and seconded to do a twenty-two percent rate increase for the Pittsville Childcare Center, is there any further discussion before we vote? Then all in favor of that motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carried.
And we will bring back the additional handbook components, we're ready to leave after that, under that.
Um, also, um, and I don't know if this is a full board discussion or if it's something for the committee to go back on, but it appears we need to have some revised numbers related to, like, yeah, like fifty weeks, forty-eight weeks. Um, those types of things, is that something the full board wants to take a look at, or is that something to have the committee reconsidering on? What, what's your pleasure? I think it has to be fifty weeks, otherwise we've got all, otherwise, otherwise, we would need to reconvene as a committee to figure out where the rest of the money's coming from, because that's what it's based on. So if it can be fifty weeks, I don't think we need to reconvene, if it can't be fifty weeks, then I think we need to reconvene because we need to figure out where's the rest of the money coming from. Or what are we bringing to the full board as far as the loss? Cause it's no longer breaking.
I'll need to rerun the numbers anyway at twenty-two percent.
Yeah.
And maybe at twenty-two percent, there's
Maybe you could take a five.
Yes, yeah, there might be a little, a little room on that, which I actually think could be really good.
I think Pam and Deb can probably communicate with the rest of the committee after we run those numbers.
That would be good, fantastic. That would be great. Okay. Um, I lost my agenda, there it is. Um, we are still on item eleven, now item, um, C, of eleven, open enrollment applications for twenty-five, twenty-six.
Any short recess?
Um, I, we have a request for a short recess, five minutes?
Second.
Okay.
And I have first, Deb had to go to Harvard's rules and.
Do we, do we have to vote on the short recess, is that something?
See, I think we could just.
Yeah.
See, I think that's just something.
And I'm not.
You're only gonna ask.
And now.
Go follow with your horse.
Yeah, and then things still running, so just take it away, I can't.
What is it in?
Um, here it is.
That's okay.
You, you, yeah, Deb.
She's probably meeting with him tomorrow.
So.
He's on June. Oh. It's the day that I, it was, uh, it was Monday. Okay, so I have my comments.
Reese, can't see, she's, she's probably asked me a few days ago, since we lost her.
Oh, yes, yeah. I understand, it's Monday. Yeah, I'm sorry, I should have been reacting her. Today is the end just.
Okay, so we can leave. Um, item C, open enrollment applications for twenty-five, twenty-six, resident in and resident out, Jason, are these new ones?
Six, so six of the outs, we never attended, uh.
So is this total, or are these in addition to what we already?
These are just new applicants?
Yeah.
Check.
Yeah, cause I was like, did you have more in than out, the, the number of students, so this is just, like, what's come in after we approved, like, a few months ago?
These are new ones.
When we read all of them, no?
Yep, the.
Couple months ago, we just approved spaces.
Okay.
Well, these are our.
So these are the actual requests that came in.
But all the new ones, like, there's also existing ones.
After we approved spaces.
Like, there's also existing ones, yeah, we have like eighty-sevens, yeah.
The ones that are already appeared. Yeah, same time, correct, these are new requests in and then requests out, and six of the out requests are students who have never attended school in Pittsville.
Six of the eight out.
Right, six of the eight out, yep, were, were never in attendance, if I remember correctly, maybe that five.
Okay, well, there's two that are coming in for the eighth, so, yeah, okay. Um, any other questions from board members about this? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve all resident, non-resident, open enrollment applications.
Also moved.
Also moved.
It's been moved and seconded to approve all resident and all non-resident open enrollment applications for the coming school year, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Item D, second reading and approval to updates of policy six seventy-one point two, expense reimbursement. I would entertain a motion to approve the second reading.
I like that motion, approve the second reading, approve policy three forty-five point six one. No, sorry.
Six seventy-one point two. Six seventy-one point two. I have one, it's been moved and seconded to approve the updates to policy six seventy-one point two, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. I didn't mean that, I said. I'm an aye, yes. Okay, item E. Second reading of the approval of updates to policy three forty-five point six one, early graduation from high school. We had some discussion on this last time, but have questions been resolved? I would assume that means yes, that questions have been resolved, so I would entertain a motion to approve the second reading of updates to policy three forty-five point six one, early graduation.
Also moved.
Also moved.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the updates to policy three forty-five point six one, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carried. The first reading of the new policy on promotion and retention.
Leslie.
Leslie.
Anything you wanna add?
No, this all comes from Act Twenty and just our focus on getting our students from third grade, because that's where Act Twenty will officially stop. But if students don't meet the criteria for Act Twenty, it's kind of what will we do to support them, moving them on? And there's many things listed, um, that could still support sending them to fourth grade, but then what will we do to support them with intervention and a summer reading program and things like that, if we support them moving on to fourth grade?
And, and I apologize for asking this now, cause I probably, probably should, but, but it just came to me this morning. So, one of the requirements you could do is offer summer remediation. So, the question, and maybe you have the answer, maybe Pam does, if we're requiring someone to take it, we cannot, first of all, it doesn't count for summer school, but are we required to transport the students then?
We're required to offer it, a child is not required to take it.
Got it, okay. What if it, so if a family said, we're going to take it, we wanna utilize this, wouldn't we have any obligation to transport? If you don't have the answer, that's fine.
I do not have the answer to that.
Cause it doesn't matter, this policy still has to get approved, but it's just a question I have is, if we're offering it and a family chooses to take it, we typically, just for the board reference, we don't transport students, but very few districts transport during summer, because it's cost prohibitive to run bus routes for fewer students, but that would be something that we may have to look into, potentially with school ban or something, if we end up transporting.
And I don't know, it's been out there in the, you know, in the frequently asked questions of other districts, I don't know, I do have a meeting, um, I have mass, um, early literacy meeting tomorrow, so I could ask that question, if, um.
If anybody's discussed that in a, you know, like I said, it just came to me this morning and then it left, it happens a lot with thoughts like in my head, uh, and then I just remembered it now, so.
Okay. Um, just a context, background question, this is a new policy, so that lead me to believe that previously we've never had a promotion and retention policy, not for the third to fourth grade.
We have a general.
A general, a general one.
We have a general policy that you see updated.
Yeah, it was antiquated.
Okay, that'll be coming.
Yeah, reference to things that we didn't even implement as far as data to determine that, that were no longer really things in my mind.
Okay. Okay, so, um, let's move this forward for the second reading, um, board members, as you have an opportunity to think about it, or maybe review it in more detail, please let Jason know if you have any questions or concerns. Item number twelve is the legislative updates. Well, joint finances started to meet, so, um, I, um.
We had the breakfast, too.
And we were at the breakfast, absolutely, um, we were at, um, Jason, Danny and I were at the legislative breakfast in Marshfield. Um, there was also the call to action that was published in the newspaper. Um, I hope that board members have an opportunity to call the legislative hotline and weigh in, um, was that sent on to staff?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you. Um, in terms of what's cooking, um, it appears that the legislature has been meeting with Governor Evers, and they have come to some agreement. And help me out with this, Jason, um, it would involve raising the low revenue ceiling, and that would have a significant impact on our district. Um, they're probably not going to do an increase for special education. Um, you know, philosophically, an increase in special education would help the Habs and the Have-nots. Raising the low revenue ceiling would help the Have-nots. And, um, that's a hopeful scenario.
The number I've heard bandied about is twelve thousand six fifty per student, and that'd be the low limit, but I've heard that from several folks, um, and that would help us as a low-revenue district, that would help us, and then the goal was to get everybody within ten percent. So the highest and the lowest being within ten percent, which is not the case right now, so yes, that, that's mainly what I'm hearing, and same thing about no increase uh, for special education funding from the thirty percent, thirty, thirty-one percent that we're giving right now. Yeah, that's, that's accurate, what I've been hearing from other folks.
Any other comments or setup that you've heard, or Julie, you guys are really good, you know, on these things, you're great.
That would be very consistent to what I'm hearing, is that, um, I don't know that I specifically heard that special education was off the table, um, but, um, just because I don't think people know what's happening federally around that yet. So I think that that is, which tomorrow the House meets, so the markup happens tomorrow in, um, in the House.
Oh, oh, thank you.
And I will tell you that.
And I will tell you that, at least from a medicated perspective, it, what their target is has shrunk. Um, and then they've given like a more narrow look at what they're looking at. Um, so at noon tomorrow, the, the House is meeting with the markup. Which, special education and folk rehab services were in the same spot and it was three hundred and some billion or something over ten, I don't know, the numbers are so huge. So I think, I think it's a little more difficult at the state level to determine specifically what they're gonna do around special education because there's so many unknowns federally and a lot of the special education dollars flow from federal. But I have heard from their state perspective, um, that there's a lot of traction and support around raising the minimum because that doesn't hurt anyone, it just might not help everyone.
Yes.
I mean, so, everything.
The only, I, I had multiple legislators ask me either or is the only indicator I've had of those discussions. They said, if you can choose to have an increase with special education funding or have that pupil, uh, low revenue limit raised, that was an indicator to me without them saying directly when they're asking me which one you prefer. And I, Pam, I hope you're not gonna be mad at me. I said, without being able to crunch the numbers with my abacus, um, I said, I would probably tell you the per pupil raising the lower limit just because obviously that's going to be, um, I don't, I wouldn't know, maybe they could raise it a half percent special education funding, knowing that the twelve six fifty would have an impact with us, with where we're at.
Are they discussing also then general aid going up? Otherwise, is it all gonna be a property tax hit?
So, I think that was something that was important to them, was keeping property taxes down. So they talked about maybe having more money go into that general aid component as well. What's that?
Uh, eleven thousand through twenty-five.
Yeah, so it'd go up about thirteen hundred dollars per student.
Uh-huh, which would be helpful.
And then, and to, to Pam's point, if we really, if, in there committed to lowering property taxes, if that, the, the general aid went up, that would obviously, more, more shed revenue would come to the districts, which would vote property taxes, and that's the key to the operation. And that's, I think, what a lot of school officials have been saying is, if you increase that state aid, it's gonna go to schools and it's gonna lower property taxes. If you could maybe put, so with that surplus, it's one-time money, right? That surplus, once you spend it down, it's not there anymore. So, but if you could put a chunk into that state aid and then disperse that to districts, that would go over property taxes. Clear as mud, right? But I mean, that would be our hope, is they increase that and raise that low limit. That would help us as a, speaking of the Pittsville school district and our taxpayers.
And I would predict that when tax bills come out in January or in December, we will have a small increase.
We actually projected a small decrease in year two of, of the mill rate.
Oh, okay, a decrease of the mill rate, okay. Because.
I do the mill rate.
Because what I keep hearing is that, um, the local municipalities are getting really serious now about their reevaluations.
Yes.
So the tax increase next year will follow at the town level.
Yeah, year two projected a small decrease in the number, for your projections, and then a slight increase in the three.
Yeah, so stay tuned.
Okay, that's all I have.
Okay. Item thirteen, uh, is there a second call for public comments?
Definitely.
Can we?
Right out. I said we've cleaned the room, right?
Oh, yes, okay. Uh, future agenda items, administrative staff, school year summary and goals, countywide transparency task force, liquidated damages, new staff intro in June, the SRO, MOU comes up in June, and appointing the school board representatives. Besides those two items specifically earmarked for June, do you see any other item for June in this A through F list?
Possibly the policy for retention, looking at that one. The, the nineteen eighty-six.
The general one.
Oh, okay, the Lucy-Boosie one, okay, okay.
So, I don't, I don't have anything for June. I just, I think there's still another outstanding item that I thought we talked about, which was the letter that we received from a teacher and us just, I, I just think.
I just, I was gonna bring up the sick day hail.
The sick day, yeah, just that we, it deserved, it's been asked for us to have a conversation. I'm not saying we're changing anything per se, but I think we would want to get that on the agenda.
I was, I would be prepared to have data for the board to review, um, because I asked, uh, other super attendants at other school districts. If we wanted to put that out in either June or July, I would be prepared to bring the data from the board to review if different. Scenarios.
Thanks for mentioning that, Julie.
Yeah, that was what, same thing, gives my, same way.
Yeah, something like that.
Okay, we are to fifteen, which is closed session. Or we consider moving to closed session, we're just gonna see, you actually, nineteen dot eight five, around one, around C. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to move into closed session, June, please call it off, please.
Yes.
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 Who needs your sunglasses, do you have? Who needs your sunglasses, do you have?
We all have them.
Everything, yours are just accessories, that's actually.
Danny has a group.
We're not ahead.